We do have a quorum. There are five members present. Consent agenda. The commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. The only item on here is a replat in the Polters Highland addition. Does, uh... See if anyone wished to pull that item? All right, I'm gonna open it up for public comment if anyone wishes to speak on the lone item on our consent agenda, which is RP 2415 Polters Highland. All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's five zero. Regular agenda, conditional uses. The planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. Item one, CU 2420, 418 South Adams, a request for a conditional use to allow short-term rental in the single-family residential zoning district. This was tabled from our last meeting. Ray, you're up.
Good afternoon. Ray Limeberry, planner. This was tabled from last month. It is a conditional use. They previously had one and they let it expire, and so they are going through the process again. It is in District Five, the Santa Rita neighborhood, RS1 zoning. They did pass their safety inspection. And the yellow star is them. There's a lot in Santa Rita. We previously had mailed out eighteen notices, and there was one in opposition. So staff is still recommending approval. We did ask code compliance, and they had two violations, which they fixed the same day. And then there were two police reports, two calls for service. One was in June of 2022, and there was lewd conduct, rude behavior, that type of thing. It was handled... The police asked them to stop. The owner also confirmed that they knew about it and handled the situation. The other one was in February of '24, and all it was was for a dog barking at the house next door. And when the police went to their house, they said it was because the neighbors had their music too loud. The police walked over there. They said they were there on an Airbnb, and they turned the music down. And that was all that we were able to find. So staff is still recommending approval. And again, this would require them to renew in June, so we would check all this again in June. They are up to date on all their hotel taxes. They've been paying that. So with that, is there any questions?
What were the two code compliance issues that were resolved?
Tall grass.
What, oh?
Tall grass was one of them, and junk in the yard was the other one.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward and state your name and address or single-member district.
Good afternoon. My name's Chris Kinsey. I live at 1119 Live Oak, which is two houses from the subject property. I was here last month. I spoke to you all last month, expressed my opposition to this. I'd like to talk for a little bit about short-term rentals in this property specifically. The short-term rental, you know, in this area, there were a couple of police reports, as we talked about last month. There were also, there's a problem with the yard being kept, junk in the yard, things like that. As I told you last month, a lot of the renters in this property seem to be commercial renters. So we have, you know, commercial vehicles, trailers with heavy equipment, debris in the yard, things like that is what we're dealing with in an area that's not zoned, traffic's not rated for that kind of equipment or those types of things. We have to deal with that. We also... I understand that the city council has approved short-term rentals in San Angelo, and I think that's great. I also think that they have their place, and in my neighborhood, I don't think they have their place. If you are a resident of San Angelo, if you're worried about sex offenders, right? Texas, the state of Texas requires that sex offenders register in their residence, but in a short-term rental, there's no process for that, right? So any sex offender, any convicted felon, anyone can stay in a short-term rental without any notice to the residence, right? I personally have used short-term rentals in the past in other cities. I'm not against them. I just don't want them in my neighborhood. I don't allow my grandkids to go to Motel Six and play in the parking lot. I shouldn't have to worry about that in my front yard. Okay? Again, I'm opposed to this, and I hope you consider that. I hope you consider the declining their request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsey.
Hello, hello. My name's Gabriel Lucky, and I live at 424 South Adams. I'm the direct neighbor to the right of 418. I've dealt with many incidents. The two police incidents, I believe there's been three, but the two police incidents were, one, due to the neighbors lifting themselves up over their fence, and I guess you would say bird calling at my wife who was swimming. I have found beer cans, half-drunk beer cans in my yard, here recently, two half-eaten apples that have been thrown in. My backyard is a pool, concrete, and turf, so it's very clean, very clean, and anything that's thrown over, I mean, it's like, it's easy to spot, obviously, and I know it didn't come from me. Their yard is elevated, I want to say four feet above mine, so, you know, for them, for it's, I guess it's, the word I'm looking for is, they have to elevate themselves over the fence to peek over. That has happened several times, several times, and I don't know what it is about this rental property that brings the same type of people, but I'm smelling marijuana every time, every time. My kids are out there playing. I've already had to explain to my little one, you know, what's going on, and, you know, you're free to do whatever you're gonna do, but it's uncalled for, in my opinion. Before the, before it became a rental property, the yard was very well-maintained, very well-kept, never had any issues with anybody. My dogs had, I had, it was never an issue. And ever since then, the yards, I mean, it's supposed to be zero-scape, but there's weeds that are knee-high, and, you know, it's an eyesore. There's trash in between both of our yards that they just throw there. As Mr. Kinsey said, the large trailers, many trucks, I've counted eight at one time, several times, that are just blocking the driveway in the street, parties. My wife and her friend were bringing in some groceries in one incident, and a couple of guys were calling them, "Hey, come play some, come play pool." Apparently, there's a pool table in the, so it's a party house. "Come play pool." You know, I'm not gonna tolerate that. You know, I feel like our neighborhood's a safe neighborhood, and I love the fact that before that, it was a great neighborhood. It's the number-one reason I moved into the place, and ever since then, it's like, I can't even, I don't feel comfortable, you know, being out there swinging, you know, pushing my kid on the swing or whatnot, 'cause it... Is that it?
Go ahead and finish your thoughts, Gabe.
Yeah, it's just, you know, every time I'm out there pushing my son on the swing, there's guys out there, work guys, drinking beer, and it's just not the same. It's just not the same. So, you know, I'd appreciate it if, and as Mr. Kinsey said, I'm not opposed to Airbnbs. I do use them myself. I do, and it's just, I don't feel like this is the neighborhood for it.
So, Gabe, I have a question, and the same with Mr. Kinsey. There's a process by which these short-term rental properties have a registered agent. If it's not the owner, it's someone local that's responsible for maintaining and being a point of contact. Do you have contact information for the owner or for the operator of the short-term rental, and have you had conversations with them about these issues?
I have reached out through the, it's not Airbnb, the Verbo. I've reached out through Verbo to contact them in 2022. They did get back with me, and it was a representative. It wasn't the owner. It was a representative of the property. They did get back to me and said that the issues would be fixed. And then I had to reach out again, and ever since then, they have never reached out.
Okay.
So, but I don't have direct contact. No, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Kinsey. Yeah, if you could help, I'd love for your clarification.
Yeah, just via, like, I have emailed the site and no response.
Okay. Thank you both.
Good afternoon. My name's Jim Kinslow. I live at 1115 Live Oak. For the record, this is about, I'm on the other side of Gabe. Main reason that it's, I am a real estate professional, so my association here has, won't take a stand on it, 'cause they don't seem to want to take a stand on anything that's property rights-related. But as someone that lives in the neighborhood, it's, we have a really good school. That property could be better used for long-term rentals for somebody that wants to get into Santa Rita district. Personally, I don't like it because of the increased traffic with walking my dogs. I have two daughters that are college age. I don't like them being, I don't like people that are there making certain comments towards them, especially whenever they're not, when they don't have a long-term presence there. So, it's a, there are places for short-term rentals. I use them. It's a, whenever we travel, it's our preferred way, especially since we have dogs, and it's a lot easier with short terms than it is with long terms. But this particular situation has turned out to be a problem issue. In regards to finding the agent, I'm a real estate broker here.
Yes, sir.
Been here for over eight years. I have no idea how to get hold of those.
Okay.
I'm a real estate professional that does this for a living. So, just for the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this?
My name's Jeremy Goodson. 12718 Northeast 159th Street, Battleground, Washington. I am, I have an ownership interest in it, and I'm managing the property. So I remember when the incident happened in '22 that he referenced, and he called me, and I did everything, could right away to resolve the matter, get rid of them. I would just like to, you guys, to know that our process ongoing on how to screen people has really greatly improved. We clearly state no parties. When people are out of line in any way, there's financial repercussions for them, and as soon as anything's brought to light, I act on it right away. I don't know what you're talking about when you say you're trying to email me, and I didn't respond, 'cause I always respond, within 24 hours, almost the same hour when I get any type of communication. I'd be happy to, of course, share the contact information, and they can call me, text me, anything, anytime, right away. We did have a period where the landscaping wasn't maintained as well as it should be. So, you know, we're getting on top of that. We had a problem with the irrigation, where it broke in the middle, and someone was supposed to fix it, and they didn't, so now we can't keep things irrigated, so things have dried out some. You know, I mean, yeah, I just remember that one incident back in '22. I do know there's a doc, a bar, a dark, a dog barking issue in the house next to us. Every time we stay there ourself, we hear it. It barks a lot. I don't think that's fair to say that our guests caused the dog to bark if that was the cause of the second police report, you know? That's kind of strange to me when the dog barks anyway, but I don't want to cause any problems, you know? I want to do everything I can. It doesn't do anybody any good when we get bad tenants in there. We screen very heavily now. Just, if you're not familiar with how Airbnb works, there's a way that you can prohibit people from booking if they don't have any history, and so that's what we've implemented. I don't know exactly when, maybe a year ago or so. So that, we have learned in our experience, 'cause we have other properties that we manage, we've learned that that's the best thing you can do. Do not let people come into the property that don't have positive reviews in the history. So that's really, I've done, I'm sorry about, yes, construction workers. People like to rent this that are doing jobs in the local area, and sometimes they have a trailer, sometimes they have a commercial rig. I can't prohibit that. I don't see why I would want to, you know? I mean, they park in the driveway, maybe they park something at the street, I don't know, but I don't want to discriminate against people who are working to stay on Airbnb. But I just wanted to say that I'm open to doing whatever I can to make neighbors happy.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do you, it wasn't clear to me. Do you live locally here in San Angelo?
No, I don't.
Okay. Do you have a local representative here in San Angelo?
I do.
Okay.
Is there, do you have their name and phone number posted at the property?
I believe it's on the inside, not on the outside, like on a sign?
Right, no, we don't want it on the outside.
Yeah.
No, we don't. We could do that, though.
No, we don't want it on the outside.
Oh, you don't want it?
No.
Yeah, it just needs to be posted.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on the inside, yeah, yeah.
On the inside?
Yeah.
And has, does the staff have the contact information for the local representative as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take thoughts from my colleagues up here.
Travis, I think my only concern is the timing. We heard two different timings. So let's say the process started about a year ago.
Okay.
Since that year, or going back a year, have the issues been resolved, or are they about the same? The trailers, the different smells coming out, the beer cans, is that still going on, or has that been resolved for about a year now?
Yeah, please, for the three that are here.
About a month ago.
An open public comment, sorry.
About a month ago, I found a, I found a half-drunk beer can and two apples. So...
In your backyard?
Now, the parking, I will say, the parking has been addressed. I will, I will say that. It has been addressed. They're not parking in front of my house as much anymore. It still happens, but I can, I know it's been addressed, to be fair. And, but as far as the smoking marijuana, the beer drinking, and the apples being thrown, I mean, that's still happening. There's no way, really, to prevent that.
Right.
You know, and, but it's a nuisance. It's a nuisance, and I don't know what any Airbnb owner could do to prevent that, really. You know, they start to drink, they start to smoke, and things happen, and things escalate, you know, especially when you're in the privacy of your own home, swimming, and there's, there are bird, dog, and yelling, whistling, you know, it's gonna escalate. And it has, and it's unfortunate for me and my family, because, you know, I know he's trying to make a living, and I know, you know, that it's not his fault, but it's just not the place for it, you know, and the way it's elevated, the backyard, and it's easy for those guys to peek over and yell, and hoop and holler, and whistle, and it's just uncalled for.
Thank you, Gabe.
I haven't noticed much of a change, personally.
Okay.
Again, the, you know, there's a lot of commercial renters there, and when you're there and your group of your coworkers are there, it's not like you're at home, right?
Okay.
And so it's a lot different. It's a different environment. So I haven't noticed much difference at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so you know, staff checked...
I'm gonna close public comment.
Staff checked police reports again and code again as of Friday, and they still have not received anything.
Okay.
When did you say that their conditional use lapsed?
Yeah. It was originally from 2022 to 2023, and then it lapsed sometime...
So it's been out for a year?
Almost a year, yeah.
So are you saying, then, that this is a renewal that should have been done in '23?
Correct.
Yes.
And so my question would be, how is it still...
So we're treating it brand-new.
I'm sorry?
So we're treating it like it's new.
Okay.
The only difference is they were paying hot tax that whole time.
They were paying the hot tax at the time?
Yes.
For the year, what would have been '23 through...
Yes.
This renewal? But they were operating without...
Any conditional use.
Conditional use.
Yeah, we've done a lot of short-term rental cases in the last couple of years, and I can't think of a case that has more calls or issues than this property. Can you guys?
It's one of the worst ones that I've seen.
And it's really concerning to me.
That's my, my biggest concern, really, is that we put these parameters in place with the short-term rental ordinance that we vetted quite a bit, and, you know, one of the things is that there's a local representative, which it sounds like there is, but I don't know. It's been out of compliance for a year, and there's been multiple calls, which is another thing that's addressed in the ordinance. So if they're not compliant, then I'm not really inclined to...
Well, another thing on the parking, you know, they're supposed to have space for two or, is it two or four? And they have that, because they have the driveway and the two-car garage.
But they're not using that.
But that doesn't take into account large, commercial-type trucks or vehicles that prohibit the neighbors that live there on a regular basis from being able to get down the street, and kids that play, and things like that. That bothers me as well.
One of the stipulations is if they have a complaint?
Yes.
Yes.
So is there a definition for a complaint?
No.
Okay.
So in our ordinance, our new ordinance that was written, talks about Section 6, deals with the failure to comply with certain rules. And under there, number one is a severity number and disposition of citations or criminal complaints related to the operator of the establishment or filed against the owner, operator, or any occupant. So that's one thing that you can look at. The other is the severity number and disposition of minor complaints submitted by neighbors or other interested persons related to the operation of the establishment. A minor complaint shall mean a complaint documented in writing at or near the time of the alleged conduct being complained of that is supported by facts and evidence, and that is supported, excuse me, submitted to the appropriate authority having jurisdiction over such complaint. Examples of minor complaints include police calls for service that do not result in issuance of a citation, and notices of violations issued by code enforcement that likewise do not result in a citation. So it sounds like there was a couple of high weed that went to code compliance. They complied.
Yes.
There was a police call for, and I believe you said lewd conduct, and that was resolved. I don't know if there was a citation issued in 2022 or not. Sounds like there might have been another complaint to police department for noise, and that was also resolved. So everything has been resolved. The question is, have they met the rules to continue to gain a conditional use? Do you put other conditions on this particular conditional use? Maybe while we know that all of them have to renew in June of 2025, do you put a shorter timeframe on that? Do you, what else is it that, if you were to grant the conditional use, makes you feel comfortable?
I also did want to make a correction. One of the police reports, the call for service, is not on this address. It is the address next door.
Right.
The only reason they gave it to me is because in the officer's notes, it mentions that he had to go next door and speak to an Airbnb.
Yes. All right. The overwhelming concern that I cannot look past is the number of incidents that we've had at this property. And, guys, we've renewed dozens of short-term rental properties. Now, I know that we don't have, we don't have all the short-term rental properties into compliance, and I know that the planning department's working on that, and there may be some issues with those properties as they're brought into compliance in time. But I also know that from being up here for a couple of years dealing with these, that there's a way to operate these things without having issues. No one, there's a lot of renewals that I can think of where we've had no issues of any kind. And here's one that has four issues. And we got three neighbors that are up here upset about the way that it's being operated. This, to me, this speaks at the heart of my concern about short-term rentals in the neighborhoods and why we adopted the ordinances in the first place. And I know it may not seem fair to operators, but I have to look at, I have to look at the record and the, and the time that I've been up here and the cases that I've seen as a benchmark for maybe what's reasonable. And to have four violations or three in this timeframe is alarmingly high relative to all the other short-term rentals that we've had. So that's my concern.
I guess to piggyback, my concern on this is the access to a local individual that could resolve it. If someone was taking care of the property as they should...
Right.
You know, like my personal home, I'll make sure it's manicured. For the weeds to get that high and for code compliance tells me there's somewhat of a lack of pride in maintaining the house. It should never get to that point.
Right.
Same thing with the trash and everything else. So I'm kind of disappointed in the fact that the local individual is not reaching out, is not making the necessary steps to make sure we don't have these complaints.
Right.
So that's my, my negative on this. And to the point that you made, this is by far the worst.
Could you have something, Brandon?
Yeah, just one clarifying thing. When we did the ordinance, we talked about those complaints and how they're related to the operation of the STR, and we talked about things like high grass and weeds and junk and stuff like that. Those type of violations are addressed outside the STR ordinance. So while you might consider them, I mean, if this was a...
Yeah, no, and I don't, I think if you're getting violations, even if you're coming into compliance with violations, the fact that you have violations on these properties is, is a problem.
But the key in this, I mean, there's nothing showing that there's a high grass and weed violation. Is that right, Ray? So, and like, the trailer's parked on the street. I mean, there is a ordinance that addresses that, too. So, I'm just saying, be careful what factors you're considering when...
Yeah, no, let's clarify this. You said there were two code violations.
There was two code complaints.
Okay, were there any violations issued?
It was supposed to be two code complaints, and they came into compliance before a violation was issued.
What date, what dates were those?
I don't have the dates.
What were the complaints?
They were the weeds, tall grass, and then junk in the yard.
And junk in the yard.
Well, then I misheard, then.
I'm gonna open it up and let the applicant come up here and speak. It appears that he would like to. Please. Yes, sir.
So just so you know what was going on with the trash, at one point, we put a whole bunch of debris, yard debris, into black plastic bags, and I piled them up on the back alleyway. Okay, because there's a little section in the back, it's away from the property. I thought it was a clean, nice, tidy spot to put it, and they were supposed to be picked up and dumped. Apparently, they weren't. And so when this complaint came in, I just, I got on it right away. It wasn't like this place is overrun and it's just horribly...
Yes, sir.
You know, I mean, yeah, the weeds got out of control a little bit, but I had irrigation problems, and the home is immaculate. You could look at it on my website or Airbnb or whatever. The property is not neglected. I don't think that's a very fair representation at all.
Thank you. Thank you. So I guess my point that I'm trying to make here is, even if someone doesn't receive a violation, if there's a call and code compliance is coming out, and they're having to take corrective steps, there's a lot of property owners that don't ever get phone calls.
Right.
And so the standard, the standard that we're trying to instill in the operation of these properties is that of no calls, no complaints ever. We want to avoid problems. And if there's a one-off circumstance that's unique, you know, maybe, maybe that might be grounds. But here I am, again, two violations called in that were corrected, and we know one call for service for certain at the property and another that involves the property. That's, this is unprecedented. We've never seen anything like this in a short-term rental renewal. So it's a lot, and I'm concerned about it.
I think it's also indicative of the whole thought process of the, I guess, reiteration of the importance of having a local operator that is available, and it sounds like there may be someone who is listed. And it sounds like there may be someone who is listed. But I think there's some indications there that maybe they're not on top of things is the way you would hope that they would be.
Okay. Does anyone else want to share their thoughts or do you, someone want to make a motion?
My quick thought is that had a, the, the police have been called, I know, one time for the property. And that's one thing we reiterate, because people, oh, we don't want this in our neighborhood because of parties and all that.
Yeah.
Okay, you call the police, they're having a party, there's a violation or some kind of, and then they don't get renewed. We, we preach that, day in and day out. So that's my only deal is that challenge. But it's also in '22 and we haven't had any more since then directly for the property.
To Aaron's point, if we have this much concern and they've been operating without the renewal process.
Right.
Would we want to consider that they made some attempts to take care of things as they heard about them? Could we get a better notification process for the person taking care of it here in San Angelo? But also maybe making this a six-month instead of a one-year, just to see how things roll?
If we, if we agree to renew it, what, on what basis can we rehear a conditional use with the new ordinance in place?
So it would be a, a public hearing that would be either suspension of the conditional use or revocation. And it really is, there's a number of things. The first two items deal with complaints, whether it be on a high level of like a citation is issued or on what we, we put in the language of a, a minor complaint of trash, debris, stuff that they have actually resolved, basically. There's also the, you know, occupancy taxes, but it sounds like they're doing all of those things. It's really just maintenance or management of the property.
Yes.
Which is, I think, what Luke is referring to, is what is the local management of the property?
Yep. Absolutely. Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to deny.
Okay. We have a motion to deny. So anyone want to second that?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so five-zero to deny. Okay, next case. CU 2421, 115 North Jackson, request for a conditional use to allow a short-term rental in a two-family residential zoning district.
Ray Limeberry, planner. This is also a conditional use request. This is a brand-new conditional use possibility, short-term rental. It is in District 5 also, the Santa Rita neighborhood. It is RS2 zoning. They did pass their safety inspection. Again, there, they are, this yellow star instead of the other one. We did mail out 21 notices. We received one in favor, zero in opposition. And so staff is recommending approval with the same normal, follow the conditions outlined in Section 406 and 804.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Oh, before, I'm sorry, Ray, before you go. Has this property been operating as a short-term rental?
It has not.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward.
I'm Dave Levek. I live at 3014 Hemlock. That's nowhere near this property.
Yes, sir.
But I own this property and we're applying for the conditional use. And just because of all that just went on, I just wanted to kind of just say something. We've had two for a year and a half.
Yes, sir.
And have had a couple of issues with people leaving them unclean and stuff. But what it boils down to is somebody being there that is there all the time. And we're there all the time. We rent them every weekend, sometimes 60, 80% a month. And we've had two minor issues over a year and a half. So we think honestly, we have long-term rentals too. Our short-term rentals are far more kept up than our long-term rentals are.
Yeah.
And so, so I just want to say it, it kind of comes down to that. And, and we put the time and effort in. That's why there's one up there that's already saying they want it, is because I've already met all the neighbors. So.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask him a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. We got a, we had a question.
You said that you had a couple of issues with your other rentals. Was that, that you had issues with your renters or that there were police report kind of issues?
No, no police report, just, um, they came for a graduation party and had a party, basically. And were doing stupid things. And, but again, I already met the neighbors. They had my phone number. They called me. It was taken care of, like immediately, so.
Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion on this one, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five-zero. Next case, CU 2422, 600 North Bays Street. Request for conditional use to allow an expansion of their current metal salvage and recycling facility in the lot to the south in a light manufacturing zoning district.
And, oh, there we go. This one is actually not a conditional use, or not a short-term rental, sorry. It is a conditional use. They are requesting to expand their current metal salvage and recycling facility. They are currently this lot down here. They have purchased this one above them and would like to continue using it, or not continue, to use it for their business. It is in District 3, Paulian neighborhood. It is ML, light manufacturing. We mailed seven notices. We have not received any in favor or in opposition. I tried to take some pictures. They do have a fence that they said that they'll tear down that chain-link one and continue the opaque fence. Just trying to get more of a picture. They do have some outdoor storage of metal. They did not say whether or not they would tear that building down. I don't think it's been decided yet. So with that, staff is recommending approval with the five conditions, that any storage on the property shall be no more than seven foot in height, that they do continue that eight-foot opaque fence, that outdoor activities associated with the metal salvage and recycling facility are between 8:00 AM and no later than 7:00 PM, that the collection of waste materials shall be limited to metals only and shall be no collection or storage of hazardous wastes, and that all exterior lighting shall be shielded and positioned not to spill over.
Could you go back to the aerial photograph? Maybe one forward, so there's a little more detail. Can you discuss the surrounding zoning and use?
Yes, so from this line back is light manufacturing. Actually, I think heavy manufacturing starts right in here. It's light and heavy manufacturing.
Ray, is there any way, is there any way to pull up the zoning map?
There is not.
Okay.
I thought I included it on a slide.
Sorry.
But I did not.
It's okay.
And then it's actually all light manufacturing. I'm going to go back actually to the slide. So there are some residents right here. But they are in light manufacturing. The residential starts down here.
Okay.
It's surrounded by.
So I, so I have the map up here on my laptop.
Yeah.
So if you see Browning Street there.
Yes, sir.
North-South Street, just one block to the west. That's where RS2 starts and goes west.
Okay.
Then it's light manufacturing over to Bays Street. North of Bays, just north of the subject property is heavy manufacturing. And that goes all the way through Houston Heart area. South of that is light manufacturing. And so they're right on the breakpoint between heavy and light.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. State your name and address or single member district.
My name's Thomas. I'm the manager for, just now, SC Recycling.
Yes, sir.
We've been here 11 years. For 10 of the years, we were Contra Iron and Metal. Now we're SA. It's the biggest scrap facility in the United States now. And.
Wow.
Safety's our biggest thing. As you can see in some of those old pictures, our old owners collected material. Our new owners ship everything out every month, so there's no mess left behind now. And if you've ever been by there and seen how full it was, it's almost empty now. Been a lot of work. And then if we've ever had any issues in the past, it was with the little houses that she showed you on Bays Street.
Yes, sir.
So we're in hopes moving further away from the houses would be a plus too.
Yes, sir.
And we load railcars already at the railroad out here at Pacifico. So we will be loading railcars in the back end of the 600 Bays address.
Okay.
That would keep everything away from the Upton Street and the neighborhoods. And as far as the fences is fine, we put new fencing around Upton when we bought it. We put trees up, so we're, we're good with all the stuff they want done. Just whatever they want to do, we'll do it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Jamal Schumpert, single member district number three. I stay right down the street from this neighbor, I mean, from this plant, or recycling factory. And I think the problem is, not that he's just a bad neighbor or anything, but it was meant to be light manufacturing. And with all the dust and stuff that he's kicking up when he moves his stuff, when he moves that salvage stuff, it will become a problem for all of us. And people do have asthma in the neighborhood. It's not because of him. And as far as his actual building goes, his, his, on the side that's, I think, closest to Upton, there's holes at the bottom where rodents are getting in. I'm not sure if he's killing them and knocking them out when they leave, but one of my dogs chased a rodent all the way, a raccoon, all the way up there.
Okay.
In, in the evening. They're not getting in there during the day.
Right.
But they're getting in there in the evening. And I guess it's, it's, just looking at that map, why would we choose to put a recycling factory, even though.
Do you mind rolling back a couple of slides?
Like even though.
Jamal, I'm going to show you something on here that, that I just want to clarify from your comments. So the, so the area that is existing is, is south. It's that, it's that lot right there that, that they currently operate. And they are looking to expand their facility to the north. And if you look at a zoning map, all of the area that's north up there is heavy manufacturing. So they obtained a conditional use permit for the tract that they've been operating on to do a recycling center in light manufacturing years ago. And it's not the subject of this discussion. It's just to allow the recycling facility use on the tract that is highlighted in red on that map to the north. And from the, from the manager there speaking, it sounds like it's going to probably reduce the traffic on the roads because there's rail access on that site. And it's probably going to be better for the neighborhood. And it's moving into an area that is surrounded by heavy manufacturing.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, this all, this is all good. It is not wrong is what he's saying. But the problem is the policy he has been longstanding is stick these places inside our neighborhoods. And inside our neighborhoods where, you know, we already have kind of medical problems, he's going to be kicking around dust. Light manufacturing was agreed and, I mean, this is more of a waste use. But it's, I mean, it could be, like you said.
Well, I, the conditional use for, for the existing facility has been, been granted. It's not a, it's not a subject of this case. It's not, they've already got the, the use. They can continue with what they're doing or they can expand north and probably alleviate some of the issues that the surrounding properties have had. I think is kind of the way I'm looking at it.
That's, this, we're seeing it the same way.
Okay.
But the problem I do have is, is the rodent problem. Yeah, him moving north is, is better for me and using the railcars instead of the, the diesels that block the way sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's way better. I'm not disagreeing with that.
So you're concerned about the rodents that are going to and from the property?
At night, not when they're there during the day, just at night.
Okay.
But he's not a bad neighbor.
You got, you got.
I was talking about from the, from the, from the south on Upton Street.
Come on up.
We don't even use it currently. It's just an old abandoned warehouse, basically.
Okay.
I know exactly the hole he's talking about. I watched a raccoon run in there one day. But I can't go out there and catch all these rodents, you know? But if we do move into the 600 North Bays, I can't promise you, but 99.9 likely, all the part he's talking about will be bulldozed over.
Okay.
Clear property after that. And moving into the Bays would get further away from any of the neighborhoods, so it should be a win for everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Jamal. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this one? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five-zero to approve. Last conditional use, CU 2423, 4901 Blue Grammar Circle. Request for conditional use to allow a short-term rental in a single-family residential zoning district.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. So this request comes to you out of District Number 6, Larry Miller's district. We are in the Bonham neighborhood. This is an RS1 lot and as you mentioned, we have a request for approval of a conditional use for a new short-term rental. This is a corner lot on a cul-de-sac. We mailed out 19 notices, received two in favor and two opposed, as you can see by the red and green stars. So here's a look at the neighborhood overall. There's actually no current conditional uses for short-term rentals in the Bonham neighborhood. The subject property is in blue, our current requests. And then we have one that has expired to the north and then two that were denied.
Okay.
They have faster safety inspections. They have the appropriate parking. So we are recommending approval with the typical condition that they follow the ordinance. And note that they are required to renew every year beginning in June of 2025. So if you have any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Austin, do you mind rolling back to the aerial that's kind of zoomed in on the property? That's perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. State your name and address or single member district.
Hi, I'm Joe Fay. I live at 4906, so I'm like right across the street. And I'm just opposed because it's a little bitty cul-de-sac and it's only a few houses. And it's, I really think that this is going to affect the whole ecology of that, of our little neighborhood.
Okay. Please, come on up. Yes, sir.
Paul Parker, 4909, Blue Grammar Circle. Two to the left. Just don't like the idea of it. We've had a, a nice, quiet neighborhood. I've been there for 27 years.
Yes, sir.
That house has been issued, and I don't know if it's the same owners or not, with not having the lawns mowed and had a dog kennel, I guess. That's one of the owners back there that I had to continually go back down there. That was the only house that we've ever had an issue with. It's been a nice, quiet neighborhood and I, I don't think in that cul-de-sac, this is the right spot.
Okay. For a short-term rental?
Short-term rental.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and, you know, I guess I'm going to, before we take a motion, I just want to go back for a second and talk about the short-term rental ordinance. We, we've, we have limits on how many short-term rentals we can put in neighborhoods. I think it's within 500 feet now. And there are parts of our community that have seen a lot more pressure on those distance requirements than others. For me, and, and I'm assuming for the rest of the, the commission here, you know, we're, we're trying to find, follow the, the guidelines of the ordinance and be fair and equitable to, to, to everybody. If there are extenuating circumstances that, that make a short-term rental a problem because of, because of its geographic or, you know, some, something that is unique only to the property, then I think. then I think, I think we have to carefully consider that. But for, for applicants that come in that, that don't seem to have overwhelming concerns or issues, I think we have to be inclined to, to approve them to be fair to the applicants. We, we had an incident here with a, a property that has been operating as a short-term rental and had some issues. If we approve this property, I would encourage you guys, as, as neighbors, to obtain the contact information for the operator. So that if, at any point, you have a problem, you've got a direct point of contact, and, and hopefully they're responsive and, and addressing your concerns. If they're not, then they may end up back in here for, to, to have the short-term rental revoked. So, does anyone else wanna add thoughts or make a motion?
Talking about accommodating driveway in this area, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ray. The driveway is in the back. It, they won't necessarily have to have all the cars parking in the front there on that cul-de-sac corner. The parking is in the back, and if I remember correctly, this particular one has a rather long driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so it can accommodate more than two cars?
Yes.
From looking at the aerial, it looks like a massive driveway.
Yes, it is.
So yeah, I, I agree, I hope that all the cars go in the back.
Yes.
In the driveway.
You see some are parked kind of into
Yes.
the back, and those are probably people that are visiting or running in the house and running out without having to pull up the garage door, but
Sure.
I would hope that it would be advantageously advertised that they have a lot of parking in the rear of the property.
All right, does anyone wish to make a motion?
With that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero to approve. Okay, rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments, city council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Case one is Z 2408, 21 East 30th Street. Request to rezone from CGCH to RS1 at 21 East 30th Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sherry Lee, Principal Planner. As you indicated, this is Z 2408, it's at 21 East 30th Street. It is .41 acres. They are requesting to rezone from general commercial, which is their present zoning, to single-family residential in order to build a, a single-family home on it. It's in SMD2, Tom Thompson's district, and it's in the Lakeview neighborhood. The Future Land Use actually has this piece of property, as you can see, as a neighborhood, so the residential zoning that they're requesting is met by the Vision Plan. The zoning originally had this little bump-out area where this lot is located. And then there's RM1 both north and south of that. So by rezoning it to single-family residential, it actually is adjoining single-family. It makes sense from a zoning standpoint, and it does remove that bump of commercial into the single-family area. Okay. As you know, electronically, I'm very good.
All right, guys.
Thank you. We sent out 20 notifications, we received zero in support and zero in opposition. The rationale behind this is the overall plan is compatible with the city's comprehensive plan. As we indicated to you, it does meet the Vision Plan. The proposed plans are consistent with the zoning ordinance to provide single-family residential. That makes sense in this case. Staff believes this plan would also be compatible with the surrounding area's existing uses. And the site is east of a commercial corridor that provides services to the existing housing in the area. And so the single-family kind of piggybacking and using the adjacent residential is the kind of development that we like to see. Ah-huh. Okay. Yes?
I don't know.
So our recommendation, and I apologize. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from general commercial, heavy commercial to single-family residential. And are there any questions of staff?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Sherry. I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take a motion.
Chairman, before you take that motion, I just wanna remind everyone that in your staff report, it shows that there was a condition for this rezoning, but the slideshow is correct. We cannot condition just straight zoning, so disregard that condition that's in your staff report. That's part of the development process, but it's not a condition of this rezoning.
So it looks like the, the condition of the meets and bounds legal description, is that what you're referring to?
Correct. We cannot condition the zoning on that.
So we're gonna strike the recommendation
Correct.
note for the condition of meets and bounds legal description?
That is correct. The condition on the screen is the correct, or the, the recommendation on the screen is the correct recommendation.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
Move to approve the rezoning request, striking the condition from the package. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero. Z 2409, 1628 and 1640 Beacon Street. Request for approval of a zone change from two-family zoning to low-rise multifamily at 1628 and 1640 Beacon Street.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. This request comes to you out of the Paulan neighborhood. This is District Number Four, Lucy Gonzalez's district. The Vision Plan for this area is transitional, the subject property is .314 acres. And as mentioned, we have a request to rezone from RS2 to RM1 zoning. If you recall, last month, we had a replat for these properties. There's two existing duplex structures on these properties, we combined them into one. That plat was conditioned on the fact that they get RM1 zoning for those. So here we have the zoning map on the left and the vision map on the right. You can see we're surrounded by a mix of zones and uses. And then we are in transitional for the comprehensive plan, so we think that RM1 zoning meets both of these. So we did mail out 38 notices, we did not receive any opposed, and we received one in support. Onto our staff rationale, so we think it's compatible with the surrounding area, as it aligns with the comprehensive plan, it's surrounded by a mix of other uses. We think there's a demonstrated community need for diversity in housing, and RM1 zoning can help to accomplish that. And we don't think that there's any adverse effects on the natural environment. So we are recommending approval. If you have any questions?
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Austin. I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case?
Good afternoon, Erica Willey with Willey Engineering and Surveying. We just asked that, I mean, this is pretty straightforward, everything they said is right on, they're already there, they're just changing it, changing ownership, and wanted the lot to be one lot. So we just asked that you approve as presented.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero. All right, we're gonna read two cases in. There's a rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment and subdivision plat combined here. So Z 2411 and CP 2405, this is 2588 Armstrong Street. Request to rezone from single-family residential to neighborhood commercial, and amend the comprehensive plan from neighborhood and commercial to neighborhood center. And then the subdivision plat, PV 2402, Sagewood Estates. Request to vacate the preliminary plat of Sagewood Estates, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Ray Lineberry, Planner, and this is all that he just said. The zoning and comprehensive plan amendment and a plat vacate. So I have slides separated out, so we're gonna do the zoning first. The zoning is the area in red. It is six acres. They are requesting to rezone from RS1 to neighborhood commercial. It is SMD4, Lucy Gonzalez, in the Paulan neighborhood. This one is a comprehensive plan. Again, you can see it's mostly neighborhood with a little bit of commercial on the top. They are asking to go to neighborhood center, which you also see on the left. And then this one is the preliminary plat they are asking to vacate. This preliminary plat was approved as a residential plat, and since they are going to commercial, they're asking to vacate it, and you should see a newer plat or another plat coming forward to show you their, their plans for a little strip center, commercial strip center. So we mailed out 11 notices, we received zero in support. The one phone call in opposition did not give his exact address, he just said he is near the property and that he didn't want any commercial. That was all he said. He was, I believe, he said he would be at the meeting, too, so. So staff's rationale, it would be compatible with the surrounding area, I am gonna go back for just a second to the zoning. If you notice, there is some heavy commercial on the right-hand side, or on the left-hand side, I'm sorry. So we believe it would kind of act as a buffer for some of the residential to the south and behind it. And no effect on the natural environment, this use provides a compatible transition. So staff is recommending approval for the rezone from RS1 to neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial also offers a lighter commercial, not a big Walmart Supercenter can go in there. So staff does feel that it, it does provide that buffer. The comprehensive plan amendment going from neighborhood and commercial to neighborhood center, and then the approval of the plat vacate, since it is no longer going to be a residential area.
Is there a, is there a square footage limit in neighborhood commercial?
That is a very good question. So there is a floor-area ratio. I believe it is 60.
So in neighborhood commercial, the floor-area ratio is .60 or 60%. The height maximum is 35 feet. And I'm looking to see if there's a density, but I don't see anything that is a density or a structure size limit. Whereas in, in some residential districts, particularly RM1, RM2, there's a density limit or
Yeah.
maximum, but there's not on the constructions, on the commercial side, it does not appear.
Okay, so do you mind going back a couple of slides to the tract?
This one, or you want more?
This one. So I'm, I'm just kinda thinking through this process here. If we vacate the plat that's on file, it goes back to the entire tract. Is that correct?
It goes back to an abstract.
That is correct, and so
And if we granted rezoning, they could potentially build on this entire tract?
Yes, they would have to plat. Now, they could plat it as one lot, they could plat it as two lots, just depends on how they would wanted to come back and re-subdivide that area.
I'm not opposed to the, to the rezoning, but I don't think that we want necessarily to have a tract that large be zoned for neighborhood commercial.
So the plat vacation is really taking that dedication of the cul-de-sac, that right away, and those lot lines away?
Yes.
That's what it's really doing.
Yes.
So far, it is under new ownership. The original owner that did this no longer owns it. The new owner would like to take the bottom three acres and do a small commercial strip center.
So the area that has a preliminary plat
Correct.
would be redeveloped?
Correct.
And I don't think we'd have an objection to that, it's
They're, they're not sure of the top portion. They kinda were just trying to make it easier as a whole lot, rather than to try to break it up.
Okay. Can we rezone it without vacating the, the plat?
It's a residential plat.
I think the short answer is no, and I think that comes down to lot sizes. The lot sizes that are represented on that residential preliminary plat would not meet the minimum sizes for a CN lot.
Okay.
If I'm reading this right, we're talking about single, single-family residential is what it is now. And then you have neighborhood on behind it, even though there might not have housing on it, is that correct?
That is correct.
And even across Armstrong the, the other way. So, commercial is right, just almost on top of it anyway, general commercial, heavy commercial. And then you have heavy commercial across the street.
Correct.
What's the road classification for Armstrong?
It's a minor, minor arterial.
So with the half of the three acres and the other three acres having nothing on it as proposed right now, and if we rezone it, the whole six acres would be, okay.
And the only limitation on density is floor-area ratio?
Yeah.
So, you know, 60% of a six-acre tract is a lot of square footage. And I, I know it's an unintended
Use, but you don't
consequence, I'm not trying to make this difficult, I'm just, I, I would, I, personally, a three-acre neighborhood commercial development is, is great, I just, I'd like for it to be three acres and not six. And there's not a, there's not a plat, a preliminary plat that's coming in with it.
Correct. They, the new owner wanted to know if this zoning would pass before they start getting into all that and everything. The previous owner made it seem like they would never get commercial. So they're, they, they're really wanting to see if this passes, or if it can happen.
And you're saying we can't rezone it without vacating the plat?
Yeah, my, my concern is it's never gonna be built because the new owners are not going to build to what's already been platted.
Correct.
So we know there's gonna be a change of some sort.
Correct.
So whether we vacate it or not, it's never gonna be done.
Correct. Unless they sell it off.
Above the, the red square, you can see some maybe small buildings. Do we know what that, is that housing, since it's residential, a single-family in that area? Do you know?
That's a house there, and then K L S T's in the green.
I was gonna say, I know K, I'm gonna go to a different, oops. Didn't I have
There's a lot of commercial right there, what was
Hmm. No, I was looking for a specific picture. I know right here is the tower.
Will you please go to the Vision Plan? Because really, that's what we should be looking
At 100%.
Our Vision Plan, because of the arterial Our vision plan, because of the arterial roadway and 28th, I think is a major collector.
Yeah.
There in the future, we are looking that that area should be growing with some commercial that supports those neighborhoods now.
It makes sense, Armstrong's a major thoroughfare, commercial on it makes sense, generally speaking.
The preliminary plat has vested rights, and so that's the thing, it has the vested rights in this area right now, since it, and it's also residential. Without taking the preliminary plat away and taking those vested rights from that layout, then we, it's very difficult to rezone it to that neighborhood commercial. One could come back and argue, well, it may be zoned neighborhood commercial, but I have vested rights to build a house there. So that, that's why we're trying to do the plat vacation, but I think they're also trying to just look at, will this zoning work?
Right.
And we understand that six acres is a lot to rezone for neighborhood commercial because it should be lower intensity commercial buildings.
If we had, if we had a preliminary plat that was part of this discussion, where they just divided
Into two halves.
Yeah, two, three acre lots.
If they would amend the preliminary plat, that might make a big difference.
It, I, it would to me, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the, my colleagues feel about this, I, I just, six acres of, of commercial right there is a lot.
Well, going to what Trinidad said, even if you do that, something may not go on that other end, that other three acres, because you can't put, it's stay with single-familying, he's not going to build a single-family on that other three acres.
Oh, no, I, we're going to rezone the entire tract, I think, is what's
That's just his request right now.
Yeah.
I think on the positive side, what I'm looking at is if we do it all, and, and I know there's a, a belief of what they're going to do, maybe it's some sort of commercial or retail outlet out there, by not going with the full six acres, we truly are restricting what the owners can do, because we don't know where they're going to put their buildings, what they're going to try to do overall. So I think with some of the restrictions that we could be imposing on them, they may or may not decide to go forward with it.
Right.
Is there anything about that track that would, would prevent somebody from building on, like, say, the northern three acres of that as opposed to the southern?
No.
Like drainage or easements or anything that we're aware of?
The northern boundary?
So the northern boundary, there is a provision, because you see the lot behind it, you have to have, get utilities and infrastructure back there. So that is, that is a challenge, obviously, because that costs dollars. But on, that is why the eastern side of Armstrong has not built significantly is infrastructure, and you also back up to the East Angelo draw, so you, you start having restrictions in development, just causing development costs to go up. And Armstrong in that area is a text dot road, and getting across a text dot road with water and sewer is not as easy as it is a local road. Now, there are, I believe there is sewer across there, and I believe there is water across there now, but they would be, in the future, making sure that that continues to go easterly to the extent of their property.
But they don't bear the cost of extending the road if they develop the southern half?
It would be on the preliminary plat as a dedication, but until they do a final plat, it would not have to be constructed.
A final plat of the northern half?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. That's probably enough to, to your development, so. Okay, I, I think I've got all my questions answered, sorry. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone else?
I'll leave it there.
Anyone wish to speak on this one, please come forward.
Erica Willby, Willby Engineering Surveying. I'm not active on this project, but I have knowledge from designing something there
Yes.
previously, and I can tell you that a detention pond there is pretty large, and from my design, it took up the north, the northeast property, pretty much all of it. I mean, the northern portion.
Okay, to develop the southern three acres?
And could you explain a little bit why that is? Because there's really not been a lot of new development in the area, and so they're having to evaluate a very large area of water.
There's just no fall, and so, I mean, it's, you have to get creative with the detention pond itself, so.
Yeah, the detention pond across the road's huge.
Yeah, yeah.
At the CRA.
Yes, sir. So I just wanted to let y'all know that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion or thoughts.
Need two motions?
Oh, yeah, probably. So we have Z 2411 and CP 2405, and then PV
I think the plat vacation.
Plat vacation 2402.
And I believe the plat vacation should go first, then you have a clean slate to rezone if you choose to rezone.
Okay. So a motion for a plat vacation.
So moved, second presented.
So we have a motion and a second to vacate the plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero. And now the zoning and comprehensive plan cases.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning and the comprehensive plan change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero. Okay, Z 2412, 2815, 2821, 2836 Houston Street, and 2826 West Houston Heart Expressway Frontage, a request for approval of a zone change from CN to RS1, excuse me, and RS1 to low-rise multifamily for the property of the following addresses, 2815, 2821, 2835 Houston Street, 2826 West Houston Heart Expressway Frontage Road. And then RP 2414 Hatters Addition, a request to replat four lots into one lot of the Hatters Addition, Block 81, lots four through eight, at 2815, 2821, 2835 Houston Street, and 2826 West Houston Heart Expressway Frontage Road.
Thank you, Chairman. Planning Commission, Planning and Development Services Director, Aaron Vanoy. So we do have these two cases here. So on this front image, I want to go ahead and make it very clear that right here, there is one more lot that's not highlighted, but did get in the notice area. Our map maker, when they made this map, got COVID afterwards and has not been able to make an update to it.
Oh, wow.
So, I have not been, and unfortunately, map makings is beyond my skills, these guys know how to do it, I'm, yeah, they'll teach me one day, so. But this is just barely in the Bluffs neighborhood, it is District Two, Mr. Tom Thompson, the vision plan is neighborhood center, it is .862 acres, and it's a request to rezone from neighborhood commercial and single-family residential to RM1. So here you see those, the zoning map, where you see there's just one little lot that's RS1, the rest of it is CN, and then on the right side, you see the vision plan where it is neighborhood center for that area. Our notices did go out, we did have one opposed, which is the property to the right. Their opposition was, they were afraid that it would have too much traffic going to RM1 being low-rise multifamily, they were concerned about the volume of traffic, which I felt was a little interesting, as it is neighborhood center, and I think RM1 low-rise multifamilies fit into neighborhood center and their zone neighborhood center very well. And I usually, usually, not always, but businesses usually enjoy more traffic coming by their, their, their space. Now, the road beside them is Garfield, which is a major road in this neighborhood because it actually does go under Houston Heart, and so that is an access for a lot of folks in that neighborhood. We did look at the, this area, it does align with the comprehensive plan. We know in our community that we do need a diversity of housing options for our community. RM1 is a zoning that accomplishes that, and they are looking at the low-rise multifamily on that lot. Currently, based on how the lot was already just laid out, there's not any significant effects on the natural environment. With that, the staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from the CN and RS1 to the RM1 for those properties at 2815, 2821, 2836 Houston Street, and 2826 West Houston Heart Express Frontage Road. So that is the rezoning. Let me get over to right here, which is the plat. Again, same five properties, there is a potential down the, down the road that we have talked with Public Works and Operations that this little piece of Hassel might be abandoned in the future, and then there's an opportunity for this property owner and this property owner, or if this property owner buys that, to make this into all one lot, which would actually be helpful, there's not a lot of stuff going on there. Most people are going to go and go to the, the access road if they're going west, or they're going to go to Garfield and go under the underpass and go back to the east. So that little strip there to, from Hassel going south is really just extra maintenance that our taxpayers are paying for at the moment. So here's that lot, you can see where they have combined that all into one, you can see where the lots used to be before Houston Heart Expressway came through and cut them off. If they didn't want to go to one lot, they could have kept those lots the same way, but we know that they have not developed because the size of the lots are, were just little prohibitive in putting a good-sized home on there. So here, that is the replat, it does conform to all of our standards. They are anticipating a frontage on either Houston Street or Hassel Street, depending on how they lay out their, their houses. Right now, they have their 25-foot setback off of Houston Street. This is, and I think it's maybe as a note, I don't guess they have my conditions on here, but if in your report, there were, there was a note that mentioned in the zoning ordinance in Section 501J, the planning director has the ability for irregular-shaped lots like this to determine if there's one front yard or multiple front yards. In this case, we make it, it makes sense to only have one front yard, it does not make sense to have two front yards, make them go through a variance process to change that for an RM1 zoning district. And so, we're going to work with them when they bring in the site plan, what makes more sense for them to maximize the space on, on that not-quite-an-acre. We had discussed going to a planned development, but that requires an acre, and so we just didn't go that way at this time. If we extend down in the future, maybe we do that, maybe we just extend the RM1, because there's not a lot more buildable area, but more land area for maybe a picnic area, a barbecue grill, or something that that little housing development could utilize down in that area. So those are the two projects, we do recommend approval on both. The standard conditions for this replat, all the infrastructure is there. The frontage road would require a sidewalk, I think that is something we are going to defer unto, until the development, because we're not, just not sure how well a sidewalk actually works there. Most of the, as we observed, most of the traffic was going down Houston Street and going back to Garfield or down, getting closer to Glynnna, and so we're not sure that a sidewalk makes a lot of sense, and it actually ends up being alleyway once you get back here to a certain portion. And so that's just, again, doesn't make a lot of sense for that to happen. So it's really just the tax cert and the, making sure that the, the lot has a water and sewer tap when it comes to the plat. With that, are there any questions for staff?
Anyone have questions for Aaron? Thank you.
Sir? It is the Bluffs, all the way until Garfield. It's very interesting that that's still called the Bluffs instead of, I want to call, is that Angelo Heights, north, just to the east of that?
Yeah.
Angelo Heights, yeah. So I, I found that very interesting too, on the maps.
Maybe Garfield is the cutoff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Blake with Willby Engineering and Surveying. Just ask for your approval, if you got any questions, we'll be happy to answer, so.
Anyone have questions? Thank you, Blake. All right.
Jamal Shumber, single member District Number Three. I'm with Aaron on this, I'm always in favor of sidewalks, but the way that this is shaped, I think it might be a waste of concrete and money to have him build that sidewalk, thank you.
Thank you, Jamal. All right, anyone else wish to speak? I'm going to close public comment and take, take thoughts or a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Does it matter what order we do these in?
Which one? Are we doing the zoning or the
On your motion, was that for the zoning?
Yeah, whichever one we need to take first.
There you go, there, there's your answer right there.
So I think we do need the two motions and the two separate votes, one for the rezone and one for the replat.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the rezone.
There you go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero. So we've got a replat.
I'll make a motion to approve the replat as presented.
Okay. We have a motion and a lot of seconds to approve the replat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero there. All right, Z 2413, 2025 and 2029 Vaughn Street, request to rezone from CGCH to RM1 at 2025 and 2029 Vaughn Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sherri Bailey, Principal Planner. Pardon, oh, keep going? Right, there we go. Okay, you have, excuse me, before you request for a rezoning for these two lots, they are 2025 and 2029 Vaughn Street, they are .342 acres, they are wanting to go from general commercial, heavy commercial, to low-rise multifamily residential. This is an SMD five, Karen Hesse Smith, and in the College Hills neighborhood. I know it, there.
Got it.
I got it, okay. On the left, you have the future land use, as you can see, this area is, large areas listed as campus institutional and then the commercial listing, which is where our present zoning is in the CGCH. This piece of property backs up to the ASU property, and that is particularly important in this area and the development in this area, because a lot of it is geared to student or teacher housing, and a lot of commercial that also is geared to university. If you go over to the right, you'll see that the zoning, there is a low-rise residential, which is just north of these two pieces of property, that's a large apartment, two-story complex, and then the CGCH. Right now, the area of ASU is kind of listed as single-family residential with some commercial and open space on our zoning map. So it's, it's an area that's in flux and in development, but definitely centered around ASU. We sent out 11 notices, we received zero in support and zero in opposition. The rationale behind this, staff took a look at the service area within the site, looked at the uses within that site, staff believes that this plan is compatible with the surrounding areas and makes sense within the existing uses. The site, as we indicated, is east of the ASU school and south of similar The site, as we indicated, is east of the ASU school and south of similar housing development, but it does lead into, off of Vaughn, a commercial area, and then, which extends on up to Avenue N. I don't have very strong fingers, is what I can figure. I don't, I don't know. We also believe that there will be no effect on the natural environment. We believe this facility meets the defined community need, particularly in that area, and that the use provides a compatible transition for this underserved area of town, while meeting the defined need for the community, which is, in this case, housing and particularly I don't know what I'm doing. It just doesn't like me. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from general commercial, heavy commercial, to low-rise multifamily. We also have attached with this the plat, replat for this piece of property.
Yeah, I don't know. Did I read that in?
You did. I do not believe that you did.
So RP-2413, San Angelo Edition, Block Four, Lots 11 and 12. A request for a first replat of Lots 11 and 12, Block Four, San Angelo Edition, located at the northwest corner of Vaughn and Jack Street.
Okay. And as you just read in, this is the replat where those two lots will be combined into one lot. This area is already a developed area. It has curb and gutter. It is completely built out, so we are recommending that you approve the replat for this area. We do not have any particular conditions on that.
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Sherri. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good afternoon. Blake with Will D. Engineering and Surveying here again. Just ask for your approval. If anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Blake.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment, take thoughts or emotion.
We need zoning first, thinking. Aaron?
Zoning, yes.
Yes, I think the, in this case, I don't think it matters too much. They're actually decent-sized lots, but yeah, I think you could do either one.
So I'll move to approve the request to rezone from CGCH, general commercial, heavy commercial, low-rise multifamily.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezone for Vaughn Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero.
I'll move to approve the request to replat Vaughn Street and Jack Street.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the replat of San Angelo Edition, Block Four, Lots 11 and 12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero to approve. All right, subdivision plat. Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. PV-2401, Lake Nazworthy, Lake Nazworthy Edition, Group Red Bluff. Request to vacate the first replat of Lots 44 and 45, Block Three, Section Three, Lake Nazworthy Edition, Group Red Bluff. Vacating this replat will result in Lot 44A, returning to two separate lots, Lot 44 and Lot 45.
Thank you. Austin Reed, Planner. So this request comes out of District Number One, Tommy Hebert District. We're in the Nazworthy neighborhood, right off of Lake Nazworthy, as you can see. This is an RS1 lot. The vision plan is neighborhood. And as you mentioned, we are vacating a recent replat. That replat set this to one big lot. We are returning back to two individual lots over .767 acres at 2914 Red Bluff Circle. So here's the recent replat that we are trying to vacate. You can see it's one big lot, it's Lot 44A. And then this is the original plat that we are looking to return to, where it's two individual lots, Lots 44 and 45. So if you pay close attention, the existing house that's on that lot seems a little bit close to the internal lot line. We did reach out to the applicant about this. They provided this site plan, which shows that measurement to be six feet. Staff hasn't yet been able to verify this. If it's not the case, though, we think it may be a case where they have vested rights. The house was built in 1967. The plat that we are returning to is from 1999, which predates the zoning ordinance and the setbacks, so we believe the vested rights may be attached to that.
Yep.
But I think that's everything. We are recommending approval, subject to, sorry, that's the wrong slide. We are recommending approval.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anyone have questions? Anyone following this? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Erica Willdie, Will D. Engineering and Surveying. I ask that you approve as presented, and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for Erica? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this one? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve as presented. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. Okay, final plat. FP-2414, Lake Shore Estates, Section Three. Request for a final plat of 25.252 acres located south of Bright Avenue and southwest of South Concho Drive at Lake Nazworthy to create 87 single-family residential lots.
Mr. Chairman, my question. This is the Lake Shore Estates, Section Three. This plat came before this board, over, a little over a decade ago. They just weren't ready to actually build at that time, and so that plat kind of expired, and they brought it back for IR consideration today. Just over 25 acres, again, 87 lots in District One, Mr. Tommy Hebert, the Nazworthy neighborhood. The zoning is already single-family residential, and the vision plan is neighborhood. And you can see, this is kind of a zoomed outlook. You can see Knickerbocker there to the, kind of the northwest or westerly. And you see Lake Nazworthy there, kind of to the east, and South Concho Drive, that is the thoroughfare that kind of goes through there. So here's a zoom-in, or here's the lots themselves. On the left side, you start with Lighthouse Lane, then you have, is that Lighthouse Lane? I think that is.
Can't tell.
Yeah. I thought that was going to be Chesney Lane, but maybe it's Lighthouse Lane. Lantern Lane, and then Lamplighter Lane. You can see those three. And then, this area down here, over a decade ago, it was thought that this would actually come through and meet with South Concho Drive. Since that time, there's been the Lake Nazworthy Sewer Upgrade Project, and currently, the lift station is in this area, and so that kind of prevents that from coming through. And so, what they've actually done, and I think, I may have it on the next slide, no, I don't, I should have had, this is the, they have actually revised this, and they have narrowed this down to where this road just simply turns in to this north-south road, and they have an extension, a small extension of the alleyway to meet the alleyway there, and the rest of this is part of that Track C, that will probably be stormwater detention area, or something of that nature there with Track C. So, planning decided to really kind of look at this, and I want to go through this just as an exercise, so that the board actually knows what planners do, as well as the public knows what planners do when they get a plat like this. This looks very straightforward. We always need housing. So first thing, we look at how does the infrastructure come in and around, and how does it affect this plat? Well, on here, you see the green is the current sewer system, and the purple is the proposed. And you can see where the two major lines that go under Lake Nazworthy come back to this lift station in that area to help with capacity. And so, having a road come through there would not make a whole lot of sense. Then we look at also the safety aspects. South Concho Drive is a, I think it's a major collector in this area. It is not quite built out to a major collector. It's about 25, 24 feet wide in this area. Having that road have another connection there in this S-curve just really doesn't make a lot of safety sense. While it may make connectivity sense, safety, health and safety is our first priority, and trying to put something in there, although speeds on that road should be probably 35 miles an hour, you just don't have enough sightline to see when somebody's at a stop sign slowly pulling out, taking a left, or something like that, and why cause more havoc? And then we thought, well, could you go south? And of course, this is that zoomed-out area, and you start seeing this area here. So this is that area right here that they'd be coming across, if they were to come across and connect. Well, you can't really go south, because you get into a much more marshy area, and an area that just probably, while it could be, a road could be built in there, the development costs are going to be so high that it doesn't make a lot of sense. Since there's only 87 houses, we also talked with the fire marshal. They said that's well below the threshold to require two exits. While ideal, they would have two exits, but in this case, they really have two exits going to the north. They're at Bright. They could go back and go all the way to Knickerbocker if they needed to. And so, they are not at any risk of having just one exit out of that neighborhood. So with that, we do recommend approval. These are the standard conditions that you would see with tax certificate, install water and sewer mains, and hydrants as necessary, install service taps to each lot, a drainage study, a sidewalk along South Concho Drive, and that can be deferred to the construction of the lots, a paved alley between the South Concho Drive and Lamplighter Road, and then submit construction plans for the internal dedicated local roads, and submit plans for the incremental half of South Concho Drive, a major collector road, to meet the minimum standards for street width. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I don't think I have any questions.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
That dedication note that's on the plat, we had talked about that, is that being removed, or is the city agreeable to accepting those tracks?
That is a great question. I did not see that comment from engineering, but they have verbally said that they would not accept the dedication of Track A, B, and C, which those tracks are the tracks that are not to be developed.
Along the boundary.
Particularly here. Of course, C was here, and...
Was it A?
Hmm, is that A, or is that not A? In that area? I may have to get the...
I think the note just says B and C, but...
Does it just say B and C? Okay. A must be on maybe Section Two. Or maybe I thought of A, and there's just not an A.
Okay.
So, the question comes from Mr. Dyson, is can, will the city accept those as a dedication to the city to maintain those areas?
Right.
And the answer from our engineering services is no, they will not accept those at this time. And so, that should be a number nine condition. That should be a number nine condition, is to remove that language from the plat.
Remove the dedication?
Remove the dedication of Track B and C.
Thanks, Brandon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good afternoon. Usually I get to go first, now I'm last. Good afternoon, Russell with SKG Engineering. So, we had a follow-up conversation about the track dedication for B and C with Engineering and Operations. Operations said they would consider taking B and C if we would clean them up. There's some mesquite trees. Currently, the city has been maintaining a portion of Track B currently, because it really serves as a larger detention conveyance, or stormwater conveyance, for that lakeshore area. So I don't know if there's a way we could maybe loosely word that, to give Operations an input based on what we kind of work out, and get an official read from Operations on that part of it?
Yeah, I think we can condition it where either remove it, or attain, I guess it's Operations, it would be Shane that would...
Yes. Okay. Or obtain approval from the Operations Department to accept the dedication.
Is that a condition to...
Yeah.
Defending...
So it's not just complete removal?
Right, yeah. Some flexibility, so we can have Operations weigh in on whether they would take it or not. Because it's really adjacent to a lot of city-owned property, so it's not like it's just this little carve-out. It's kind of actually right adjacent to city-owned property in that area. So also wanted to see if the lift station...
Go back a couple.
Go back one more?
There.
Well, this'll work, I think. So the lift station is, so this is the old version from 10 years ago, and at one time, we were going to acquire that little, there's a little triangle that would kind of fill in the rest of this Lot 16.
Yes.
So that's, we're not requesting that, not getting that. The lift station is actually kind of sitting right in that area. It's a real long, skinny one, because it has a motor control tied to it.
Yep.
And so, this one lot is, is kind of buildable, is, may almost share an entrance to the lift station there, but I guess this is maybe a question, or an observation, or a thought of, that lift station is very close to the edge of pavement in the right-of-way widening of South Concho Drive, and they're putting a big, old, tall fence around it. I guess the city can put a big, tall, six-foot fence very close to city, I guess this is all, this is kind of a strange ownership area. And not that we're too worried about it, but it, maybe we work with engineering, because engineering was really dead-set that this lift station doesn't move, doesn't move especially south, because as Aaron pointed out, we get into the swampy area of kind of that extra part of, whether it's Lake Nazworthy or tributary of Lake Nazworthy. So, maybe that's a conversation we need to have. Can that lift station, would the developer be willing to give that Track 16 to the city and let that lift station shift over kind of west, if you will, and get it a little bit further away from actual South Concho Drive, and maybe make it a little more suitable to that area? So I don't know how hard-set the city is on that lift station location. I just know engineering says it can't go, and we don't want it to go any further south, and we understand that, so. And maybe that's a conversation we have, because 16, that little tract is a standalone tract. If the city agrees they want it, we can just dedicate that tract, then it'd have a lift station on it. But it was, just kind of looking through design and how the pavement ends in that area, is going to be very close to how that lift station and the fencing around that lift station kind of juts out very close to South Concho Drive. So I don't think it's anything we need to deal with here. We'll work that out with Engineering and Operations. It was just kind of adding to what Aaron talks about, is the thinking and planning through some of these plats. And we were ready to roll forward in engineering, says, oh, there's a lift station going there. I'm like, well, okay. So, yes, thank goodness we had secondary access through other parts of Bright. So be happy to answer any questions, and would ask for your approval as presented.
Anyone have questions for Russell? Thank you, Mr. Dully.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? Doesn't look like it. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and take a motion. If you're making a motion to approve, we want to either remove the dedication of Tracks B and C from the plat, or ask the applicant to obtain approval from the city. Is that correct? Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve with the applicant either removing dedication of Track B and C, or obtaining approval from Operations of City of San Angelo regarding Track B and C.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with a note added for tracks B and C. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's five-zero. Public comment? I'm going to open it for public comment, and I'm going to close public comment, because there's no one here. Planning Directors' Report.
I will be brief. We are working on a few big-picture items, cultural district, still working on the, basically, energy generation and storage systems ordinance of where those could be located. Had a great conversation with the development team a week ago on Wednesday, and are finding, narrowing down where's the right places and what are the right sizes for some of those items, and so I think that's a good move with the development community to bring that forward. We still kind of have, I would say, on the shelf is the open structure discussion, and it's looking more and more, I mean, even with the development like this one that's on the screen, where you do have one road that does have an alleyway, so there's potential for rear entrances, and I think that's maybe their designs, but then they could have a carport in the backyard. The others that don't have rear entrances, that only have front yards, if their house is built at the 25-foot setback, you really can't have an open structure beyond that. And so that's something to be thinking about for our community, what, what really makes sense for us? What is our development trends? What are our patterns going for our areas? Other than that, we have been interviewing candidates for our Planning and Development Administrator position, and we hope to have somebody in place by our next Planning Commission that will be leading our team, and be very excited about having that coming forward.
Thank you for the update, Aaron. Follow-up and administrative issues. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled to begin Monday, September 16th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m., East Mezzanine Room, City Hall, at 72 West College Avenue. Adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's 3:53.